You are watching XS Laporte County Channel 97. Coming up next is July 22nd, 2024 meeting of Laporte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
Good evening, we're going to call the Laporte County Council Regular Meeting for July 22nd, 2024 to order at 6:11 and if everybody could stand for the pledge and then take a moment of silence for retired Fire Chief Corey that died in a tragic accident. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Yagowski?
Present.
Councilman Mollinour?
Present.
Councilman Cunningham?
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
That's not him, I know.
Councilman Craka?
Present.
Councilman Keel?
Present.
Councilman Novak?
Present.
Six of seven are present. Approval of the agenda for tonight. Could, uh, the one thing that we want to add, you got those?
I got the one.
The anthem?
Yes. Alright, so. Under Old Business and...
Where was that? Old Business is on...
It was the anthem.
Is it just going to be an appropriation?
Yeah, additional appropriation for the outdated anthem bills.
You want to put it at the variant?
Send the commissioner's budget, right?
Um, no, is it the commissioner's budget?
No, because what happened was because this is a bill that because we would change insurance companies, they would, so we're not being, would not be a budget, would have to be additional.
Additional appropriation.
Correct.
So we're just going to put it at the last item for the evening?
That's fine. We'll just need to look.
Was there anything else, Adam?
Nope. So motion approved with them, with the amendment.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the June 10th Joint Workshop.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Motion by Karanka, second by Cunningham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. June 24th, 2024 Regular Meeting.
Mr. President, if I may, there's one correction to the draft that we sent out to the council and with apologies to you, sir, we listed Councilman Karanka twice as from liaison reports. So the last set of liaison report, the last liaison report is not Councilman Karanka, that needs to be corrected to be Councilman Novak with our, may I call him sir?
Thank you for your correction.
Motion to approve with those, that correction.
Second. Motion by Mr. Mollinour, second by Mr. Keel. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. July 2nd, 2024 Joint Workshop.
Motion approved.
Second.
Karanka and Keel on the question, none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open. Anybody from the public? Were you going to stand?
Nope. No, I'm fine, alright.
Good evening, Brett Kessler, 4189 West State Road 2, Laporte. I'm here representing the Laporte County Ag Association just to give everyone a brief rundown of what went on during county fair. We had an outstanding eight days. We had a little over 1,100 for each year's participate exhibiting over 4,000 individual entries. Our admission through the week was over 100,000 this year, which is the first time we've topped that overnight day period, so that was outstanding. As far as outreach, we had 100 participants from assisted living and Paladin. We had 100 YMCA and imagination station kids. We had over 500 kids from the Boys and Girls Club in Michigan City in Laporte. And we had 30 participants from family advocates. So as far as our outreach and getting people into the fair and teaching them about agriculture, we thought that was outstanding. Throughout the fair, we had 220 plus campsites rented. It was its own little city out there. This year worked very efficiently thanks to the upgrades with partnership between FMEC of the county and the Ag Association. We had nearly 1,100 open class entries that ranges from draft horses to dairy show to rabbits to home and family arts. So we had great participation there. As Mayv you know, on Tuesday, the old show arena was raised and the building site preparation is well underway and we have a groundbreaking tomorrow, which hopefully everyone can attend. So.
What time is it?
Five o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski.
I guess the only thing I heard about was just, which was criticism, which I don't think it really is bad, but people take it for what they do, especially when they get on Facebook and everything else, is that we try to put like a value added to what the fair is compared to what you go to the movie theater. And then we got to sell ourselves a little bit on it because some people are saying right now that fees high with kids and families and stuff like that. So I think that we, you know, like McDonald's has a value added meal or something. I don't know the answer. It's about the only thing I heard is some people would say, you know, it costs a lot to take a whole.
I understand that, but we also as an Ag Association gave the opportunity for people to get in for half entry that opening Saturday and Sunday with providing canned food items for the food banks, so.
I understand, you're just, I'm just.
Yep.
Like, it's how you sell yourself. I don't say you have to necessarily do something, just how you sell yourself.
Yep. But I guess the only thing I'd respond to that is it was also posted on social media that they made $75 million. So I think sometimes it's not quite.
The ones I seen didn't say that, but the people still said that.
I agree 100% and I just want to.
I'm not criticizing.
Yep, right.
And I'm not saying you need to do anything. I'm just saying that.
It's something we look at every year, though.
Mr. Cunningham.
The other thing is part of the cost is what the vendors within the fair are charging for their food and support. You have no control over that whatsoever.
And as far as the Ag Association goes, we thank you for the support from the council, from EMS, from Sheriff's Department. Worked pretty seamlessly, obviously we had a couple situations, happy to say everybody made it home and are healing well, so.
Definitely. And kudos, it was a great, even though there was rain one night, which it wouldn't be a port fair if we didn't have a little rain, but it was absolutely fantastic. It seems to be getting better every year. 178 year, next year 179?
179 years, next year the fifth through the 12.
Definitely, thank you. And Mr. Yagowski was at the first one.
Why are you guys laughing?
Thank you. Schultz, you be quiet back there. Anybody else from the public? He was on the council actually at the first one, so. Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? There's somebody on there. Anybody on Zoom? Public comment. Public comment. Public comment is now closed. Department head reports? Any department heads? He was just moving up.
I was moving up. Hi, Mr. President, Matt Reardon from the Office of Economic Development. As the council realizes that it's our annual halfway through the economic development season report, it's like the All-Star game for economic development. So just to let the council know that we worked and appreciate the assistance from the auditor's office to make sure that we had the requisite amount appropriated. There's a fund balance there of 200,000 and change that has been created. In no way does that mean that the Office of Economic Development is going to spend that. We're here for the, just to inform the council of the $120,000 that would be used not only to continue to market, but to pay for staff and the other activities related to that. So I saw that you have a very long agenda, so I'm going to keep this brief, as my predecessor would once say. We visited approximately 20 businesses. One of the previous redevelopment commission members suggested that we do a little bit more and we did. We've also integrated some of that discussion with the farming community, is there's some incentives that are out there for farmers that are making investments, so that has occurred. We made two applications for the ready program, which we should hear something from hopefully in the fall. One of them's related to ongoing improvements at Kingsbury Industrial Park and the infrastructure there. The other is for development and extension of utilities at a newly, to be newly created tax increment finance, a tech park business area at 421 and 94. Those are the two ready grant programs. We have responded to 31 plus, 31 site selection programs through the state of Indiana. We've had three site visits. We've completed the Kingsbury Bridge. The two majority landowners adjacent to the rail projects have been expending their own dollars as was laid out as part of that and the investment of the bridge to make that connection, which is good. JBC did have a ribbon cutting, groundbreaking fireworks extravaganza for the, what we called the golden spike moment, which was great. It was also nice to see a representative from the railroad there, not only locally, but also CSX, which was wonderful. We've continued with our progress with our neighbors to the south in St. Joe County and are working with, working with them diligently to identify housing opportunities next to their fortunate opportunity. And for those of you who aren't aware, that had to do with the Amazon announcement and a battery plant. So there's like 4,000 jobs and then Amazon, maybe a couple hundred for the data center operations. So we've been having some detailed discussions with New Carlisle, but it also does involve the school corporation and any new housing will have an impact down there, so we're focused on that. Our office did send out some letters to adjoining property owners and I just want to make something clear, we're just trying to figure out if people are interested at all in selling property or not. If the answer is no, that's fine. We're just trying to identify people who might want to do that. This is being done in conjunction with what's happening at Hudson Lake, the grant that was received to do that. We're trying to focus growth and development in areas that do have utilities. Now that may take a bi-county agreement with St. Joe County and the city of South Bend to do some of that wastewater work on the border, but we're continuing to work through that. That's the update of the Office of Community and Economic Development. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Yagowski.
Light deep. Right to TIF that we did in 400.
Yes, sir.
There were some question about, did we do everything proper to the TIF so we could get reimbursed if something, if we had a friendly annexation?
Mm-hmm.
Are we covered on this for that same conversation that you and I have talked about in the past?
We are covered for that same.
They said we weren't covered enough on the 400 property.
Well, we were, and maybe there was a misunderstanding of the jurisdiction. They thought one thing, but the law said another. And so what we're always do, and I'm glad you brought it up, Councilman, we're out there protecting the county's investment, so there's no way that we're out there trying to lose money. And we all inform those communities adjacent that they're wrong and what they probably should consider doing themselves. So that there's not an investment that gets made by this body that somebody else ends up sticking you guys with the bill and none of the benefit. You know, that's not cooperative government and that's not what we were trying to do.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Reardon? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Andy Ski at Marcus Electric. Our firm was hired for the next two phases of the Franklin Street Bridge rehabilitation. We were approved to proceed by the commissioners at the last commission meeting last Wednesday. I don't believe you can vote tonight because I'm not on the agenda, but I was here maybe for hopefully a little favorable discussion or a motion of support to proceed with the WJE documents that I emailed to everyone on Tuesday, July 16th. That's just a straight through, no markup agreement for our firm, but I would like to execute that on, on your behalf to get those documents moving forward.
For the engineering?
Yes.
Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, sir.
So it'd be okay if it's time to make a motion of support?
Yeah, it's going to take a while for that bill to come through.
That'd be fair.
But you want to get it on the agenda to appropriate it.
Make a motion of support and then put it on the agenda for next month?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any questions or comments?
Question, so this is just a motion of support to move forward with the engineering for the project, not?
Professional services.
That's correct. So they'll, they'll design the drawings that work in conjunction with our firm onsite to design the drawings. Once we receive those drawings, we'll bring those drawings to, on your behalf. We'll post those documents with you and county legal to obtain pricing.
Can go out to bid.
Perform the work. And then once we obtain that pricing, we'll bring that back to you to move forward with that pricing and which our firm would just be the project management.
This is one other thing you need to know is that this is for the completion, so it's for the two year, so you don't have to do it again next year.
Right.
Yep.
So that's good thinking, engineering it all at once instead of.
So the parts for the second phase of lead time, so long, we want to get that done this winter, so we have ample time to bring that to you for pricing and get those procured.
For, because it's going out for bid.
That's correct, yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, good evening.
You too. Any other department heads?
Yes.
Yes?
Hi, it's Lynn Swanson, county coroner.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you a little update on the project that we had talked about with the psychological autopsy autopsies. The grant has been approved and I will be asking tonight for money to be transferred for that so that we can get that up and going, so we're very excited about that. And I have some numbers for the first half of the year on our call load and the deaths in Laporte County. There's a total of 184, one of those being drowning, two homicides, four motor vehicle accident, 152 natural, 11 overdoses, 10 suicides, three undetermined and one work-related injury. We have one that we're still waiting on a toxicology from June for.
Could you repeat how many overdoses?
Eleven.
Eleven. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Lynn? Hearing none, thank you. Any other department heads?
Scott Cooley with Laporte County Project Management, 1267 South 400 West, Laporte. Wanted to give you an update on the building from the flood damage. We have moved in the fifth floor, the fourth floor, the third floor. IT and coroner will move in next Thursday if all goes well. EMS will move in August 2nd. Still battling some humidity issues, but the building is, is looking real good. So if anybody has any questions?
So regarding the humidity issues, a while back I spoke with Andy and some members of local maintenance. There's some concerns regarding the performance of the chillers and did they have enough refrigerant where there's some sensors that are out of whack? Has any of that been worked, worked to ground yet?
I know that Doug did lower the temperature from the chiller and it didn't seem to make any difference.
Was that before or after they checked with the refrigerant level in the chillers and the sensors that would control the faults that he was seeing previously?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Wait.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Andy.
So since our call with Mr. Newland, I have had no correspondence, so we'll be happy to reach out to him tomorrow. We have not heard anything and I can provide an email update to everyone on as far as that training work was completed or not.
When we have budget hearings tomorrow, if I can pull away, we'll talk.
Yeah, that'd be great. Sorry for not having the specific answer for you.
No worries.
Any questions of the complex? Thank you. Thank you. Any other department heads? Rich Marzinski, County Commissioner. Mark would probably remember this, several years ago, back in the good old days when I had the council job, we had an employee that had to go to training in Indianapolis, made it back to, with the county vehicle, made it back to, I think Lafayette. Car gave out, they had to get a ride home, we had to tow the car home and then junk it. It's been the history of the way we do business in the county. We buy new cars, we drive them into the dirt until they're junk. We spend a lot of money keeping them on the road and then we junk them. We've had, I don't know how many presentations from different fleet management companies, they're on your agenda tonight. We've had presentation from this particular company. In fact, the last workshop we had with them, Adam, was the only one that was there on Zoom. You got the chance tonight to move the county back into the 21st century, save the taxpayers a bunch of money with the fleet management system. I talked to other counties and other car dealers and they asked, told me this absolutely makes sense for the county to start doing business different than what we've been doing it and save the county some money. So I encourage you to give them a good listen and let's move this thing on. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Marzinski.
Rich? Rich?
Something, you and I talked earlier when we were on the council about claiming the days, we talked about what the council had, we put an ordinance out there that we can't go past those amount, remember before the meeting? The ordinance about how many days they can claim? The email. It was, it was about, you know, taking comp time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that. Yeah, I'm going to look that ordinance up tomorrow when I get to my office.
Okay.
And I'll share that with you. But yeah, I know, I'm sure we had that because I remember the issue pretty well. Yeah, okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you. Any other department head?
Good evening, Ella Builderback, Laporte County Recorder. Just a brief update. As you know, the real estate market is not what it used to be, so we're not as busy with recordings, however, we have plenty to do with working on all the indexing and making sure things are up to date. Also, 175 books have been treated for the acid, so now we'll be ready next week to start on the next batch. We have five of the Plaid books done, one that was the worst of bunch. It will take them three months to finish it. It's in such a bad shape, but it will be done in such way that will last for a long, long time. So I'm really happy that they worked with me on the pricing. You know, we were able to find solutions to how we can do it so it's less expensive because I said, this is crazy. And so I feel really good about that and I will see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other department heads? Any department heads on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none? Liaison reports, Earl?
I will be representing Mr. Eric tonight who can't be at the meeting unless he gets to a Zoom. I think he's on the East Coast, but other than that, I'll pass.
Mr. Yagowski?
I really don't have any, I just want to recognize, ask where the students from? Student here. Students from?
Students.
Are you students out there?
Those are just, you're showing your age.
Those are young employees.
Showing your age, Mr. Yagowski.
Alright. It's not an ass.
173 years ago?
173 years ago, so you gotta laugh about it. I didn't mean anybody in particular, it's, it's a compliment.
Never mind. Mr. Mollinour?
I got a couple things. I attended the Laporte County Soil and Water Legislative Breakfast on July 10th and on the same day later, later in the morning, I attended the Sheriff's Merit Commission Board meeting. On July 12th, I attended the COPS Cycling for Survivors Ride, which went through Laporte County, continues around the whole state and of course it's to remember officers fallen in the light in duty, which there are several in Laporte County, including the state prison and Michigan City and the Westville Prison where they also stopped. But they did stop at the grave of deputy, Sheriff's Deputy Neil Thompson at the cemetery near New Carlisle. And at that point, there was a eulogy read by sheriff's, by Sheriff's Captain Jeff Wright. Also, the retired captain, I'd like to just publicly thank retired Captain Mike Kellums for his participation in that ride. I know it's been a couple of years that he hasn't done that, but he was done, has done it for many, many years. I can't remember exactly how many and it's a 10-day event and he, he just never fails to continue doing it. Just an honor that he does and he doesn't ride a bicycle, he's too old, but he does drive the truck, so I just want to throw that out to him and thank him publicly for that. That's all I have, thank you. Oh, and then I attended, of course, the Laporte County Fair, which was a great fair again, so.
Thank you. Mr. Keel?
Tell him, Mr. Kellums, you said that about him.
Go right ahead.
For me, my primary liaison report for this month is I've met with all of the departments. I've been assigned liaison to to discuss their budgets and ready to go for the next two days worth of budget workshops. That's all I got.
Thank you. Adam?
In addition to the discussion we're talking about when it comes to project management and the building conditions with the chillers, also attended the Soil and Water that put on one heck of a breakfast for us annually.
That's it? Attended the FMEC Animal Control, fighting the search for a new director and the commissioners approved a new director that'll be coming in first of next month. And thank you to Eric Hayes, who been 28 years at the shelter. Appreciate everything he's done, wish him the best in his new adventure. Attend the meetings with St. Joe that Matt Reardon talked about, that's very good meetings, the RDC meeting. And, and I just want to echo what Brett Kessler had mentioned. The fair board itself is building a new show arena out there that is going to be in excess of $500,000, so it's going to be similar to the beef barn that's next to it in between there and the hog barn. And it's, it's, it's a great, we currently have a very good working relationship between the fair board, the county and the Ag Association and everybody out there working collaboratively together to, to get things done and do things. So it's, it's a great partnership and it really shows that the vision of FMEC is, it's, I guess it's working. That's all I got to say. Moving on to correspondence, Rhonda? Tim?
We have none. Thank you.
Ordinances and resolutions, Amendment to Salary Ordinance 2023-01. What's your preference?
Well, let's, let's, how about if we first get a motion to suspend the rule?
Motion to suspend the rule for two readings.
Sure, motion?
Second.
Motion by Mollinour, second by Mr. Yagowski to suspend the rules and have both readings tonight? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So these are one and two.
There are two different years, 2023 and 2024.
That's not what it says.
Let's, let's hear.
It says 23.
No. You see, so the 24 ordinance was actually.
I'm just reading the agenda.
Yeah, right. So the 23 ordinance.
Got it, got it. So we'll do 23 first.
Correct. Do you need an explanation as to this?
No, I know. No, I know. Mr. Yagowski, is there no?
Motion to read by title.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski by title only, is there a second?
Second with discussion.
By Mr. Karanka.
So what we have in front of us is we have two separate ordinances. We have one that's listed 2023-01 and one is listed 2023-12.
Correct. So the reason why it was listed as 2312, it was a 2024 ordinance, was first introduced in 2023 and so that's the way the county had it listed.
Right. We're amending what was there.
Alright, well then, so for 2023-12, a couple lines down, it says the 2024 salary ordinance adopted on January 29th of 2024.
Correct. But it was first read, it was first introduced in December in order to, yes.
Loud and clear.
So that's the reason why it had the 23, I understand.
Okay.
Perfect.
It was simple, everybody be doing it.
Right.
Could you give a little bit of background about the?
Mr. Schultz, you want to?
Purpose of this and?
Yep.
Wait, wait, so we're still on to read by title only, a motion to read by title only, is this the place for discussion?
Well, so you're gonna have to have discussion. So once you get a motion to read by title only, then you can go ahead when you go to.
We've got the motion by title.
Correct.
We've already got it in a second.
So let's.
All those in favor by title only, say yes.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
This is, Mr. President?
So let's.
This is the Second Amendment to Ordinance Number 2023-01, an ordinance adopting county in LaPorte, Indiana, salary schedule and compensation policies for 2023.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion approved.
Motion by Yagowski, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, Mr. Schultz. Now on the question. Would you like to give an explanation?
Okay, I was contacted by the State Board of Accounts and I think Rhonda contacted me also, that they couldn't find in the salary ordinance where it was allowing the assessor to have a per diem from the reassessment account. Their per diem is allowed under the statute, but it was never put into the ordinance. And so their recommendation was to probably correct last year's because it's been around for at least 10 years. So they recommended that we correct last year's and then correct this year's. And basically what it is, I think it's up to $26 a day per diem for myself and my deputy, chief deputy. And so that's basically all it is, is redoing the salary ordinance to make it up to date.
So is this for 2860?
And it's figured in your pay, correct?
Yes. It, it, it helps offset the general fund so it doesn't all come out of the general fund.
Right. So this isn't creating any new additional pay? This is just continuing what was.
It's just continuing what's been approved over the years. It just never was put into the salary ordinance.
Just defined like that.
And it's, this is attached to days that you're assessing or, or just every day?
We assess every day because under the statute, it is, well, it's, we do 10 days, whatever workdays are. The, the, because we do one-fourth of the county every year, so it's not every four years. So instead of saying, okay, we did 42 minutes reassessment this day and we did 38 minutes the next day, it, it's just easier just to do it as a per diem because you're constantly doing reassessment.
But it, but it's in his salary. It's not in addition to salary. It is, it makes up his salary.
It, it is in addition to, it is in addition to, if you look at the salary ordinance.
But it reflects what his current pay is, correct?
Yes.
His current pay plus the per diem.
Well, when you guys did the current pays, I don't know, when Matt Bernanke was here, when all that was done to help up, up the salaries, I believe it was put in back then because I think it was $20.
Built in.
It's, so it was built in, so, but it was always a per diem, but it's been around for about 10 years at least.
You're saying no to that?
So your understanding is that there are no.
So, hold on, so now I'm getting two different messages. Mr. Schultz, what was your salary beginning January 2023 combined salary?
Well, you, you add it all up.
I, I don't know. Is that how it's always been? Say it's $100. Did he always get $80 on one line and $20 for reassessment on the other line? Because now I'm getting mixed messages.
The general fund was one amount and the reassessment fund was another.
What's your total salary, annual salary?
I don't really know.
Whole park? 72?
76, maybe?
76? That's in line with the treasurer and, or the auditor?
The clerk's the highest, then the auditor.
Right.
And then the assessor, then the treasurer, then the recorder, I believe.
The salary ordinance has his base pay, I think, at 75075, but I might be off on that, plus the per diem.
So, but it's in line with?
I'm just saying it's over and above, but I don't know what his base salary is.
I don't understand, I don't understand the over and above because you can't have an over and above for an elected official. So either it's his salary that's broken out into the two amounts or it's not. And that's where the confusion is right now.
It's, it's, it's been there for like 10 years.
But that's not.
When it, when it comes to the elected official salary, it was always approved at the council, at budget time. But it was never put into a salary ordinance, the reassessment.
It was never split out.
It was never split out. It was split out in our budget. We knew general allowed this, reassessment allowed this.
Budget book.
Maybe we should come back to it. But I think if you read the statute, when it comes to setting of salaries.
I, so this is my recommendation at this point in time. This is as clear as mud. He's getting his salary. Let's take another look at this and let's revisit it at this time. I would ask, and I would suggest that y'all at this point in time, table it till next month.
Motion to table. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Yagowski, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That goes, Mr. Cunningham, would that go for item one and two? They're the same, it's.
Correct.
All right. Can you agree with that? Everybody else agree with that?
Agree.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll have that broken down and what the salaries are for the auditor, the treasurer, the, because you can tell by where they're in line with that, just to make sure you're not.
The problem arises.
Excuse me, this, this matter's tabled.
I know it is, but I'm telling, I'm telling what to bring back to us.
Well, we'll, we'll look at that this week.
We also need to look at the statute.
I, I did look.
All right, all right.
Official pay because that is set for 10 years at least.
All right.
You cannot reduce the pay.
Thank you.
Or you cannot add to the pay.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
I, I get it.
All right.
I get it, Mr. Schultz. I understand. I understand completely. No, I.
We got it, we got it, we got it. New business. First item on the agenda is Enterprise Fleet Management. Mr. Berg?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I brought paper copies just in case anybody wants one, if you can't see the presentation on the screen. Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I will try and keep this brief as I know you guys have a packed agenda tonight. So we'll start, thank you for having me and thank you for the commissioners for supporting us to this point and getting us in front of the council. My name is Nate Berg, Nathaniel Legal, and I'm representing Enterprise Fleet Management tonight. Currently throughout the state of Indiana, we work with roughly 37 government entities. That is cities, counties, municipalities, and school townships as well. The key goal of working with those government entities is reducing the overall cost of their fleet budget. And I'd like to, to mention that when I speak about fleet budget, I'm referring to every department, maintenance and fuel in one big picture. What we see across government entities, and governments entities are largest growing segment of business, is that we have a really good track of acquisition. How much are we spending every single year in buying vehicles and allocating that accordingly? But when it comes to tracking maintenance, fuel, any risk assessments or insurance costs that come with those vehicles, those are kind of on the back burner where we have some oversight, but not necessarily control. The point of this presentation today is to get approval for the fiscal year 25 budget of acquisition for the fleet, for the county of LaPorte. This includes every department minus fire trucks, ambulances, or heavy duty for the highway department. So this is anything light duty for the police department, light duty for the highway department, coroner's department, assessor's office. All of those vehicles are included in this analysis today.
So squad cars?
Squad cars included, yes, sir. The first page, if you turn to it, is going to be a testimonial from the county of St. Joe. County of St. Joe is one of our largest and happiest clients today in this government sector for Indiana. St. Joe started with us roughly 10 years ago and started with 40 vehicles. Today, there are nearly 200 vehicles managed by Enterprise Fleet Management. And every year, we track and see how much we save them year over year in fuel, maintenance costs, license and title, and being able to have an impact on the county's budget every single year. A few key highlights from this testimonial. In the first, so this was actually from 2021. We were able to buy 41, 41 vehicles that year with the resale gains. So as part of the program, we put the entire fleet on a strict cycle plan so that the resale of vehicles at a healthy point in their lifecycle fund the fleet for the county and not the other way around. We had a 15 to 20% increase in fuel efficiency across the fleet as a result of operating newer and safer vehicles. And they were able to improve their resale gains by an estimated $200,000. What we see today for the county of LaPorte is a very similar position that the county of St. Joe was in roughly 10 years ago. Proceeding to the next page is a synopsis from the data and the analysis that we've completed here in the county. Little backstory, in the last 90 days, I have talked with, I want to say eight department heads, collected all of their fleet data. This includes Major Cicero for the Sheriff's Department, as well as Bob Parks from the Maintenance Department for the Sheriff's Department as well. Current situation of the county's fleet is that the age of the fleet is negatively impacting the overall budget, the fleet operation, and the safety and security of the fleet across the county. 11% of your fleet is 10 years or older and over 100,000 miles. And what we see is that the age of the fleet has a larger negative impact on the maintenance costs and the fuel costs, which we don't necessarily have a strict hand on. Operating newer, safer vehicles is going to increase your fuel efficiency. It's going to reduce the maintenance cost and it's going to put all county employees in safer vehicles, the sheriffs included. The objective today is to identify an effective vehicle lifecycle that maximizes the equity at the time of resale, creating a conservative savings of $2.3 million over the next 10 years.
Is that what that number is?
Absolutely.
Because it reads a little different. Am I right? You got either.
So the annual savings, are you talking about the?
2.3 million?
Yes.
You got too many numbers in there.
Oh, gosh. It is 2.3 million, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. So our analysis conducted that moving to this fleet program is going to reduce the county's overall budget by 2.3 million over the next 10 years. That's accomplished by shortening the vehicle lifecycle from today's nine years to a healthier 4.2. It's going to provide a sustainable fleet cost that is predictable and proactive year over year. So instead of building the fleet around the budget and trying to fit in the amount of vehicles that we think we can fit, we're going to be able to proactively plan for the fleet years out in advance. And that could be a portion of the budget conversation that takes place. Not too long ago, the Sheriff's Department got 10 new vehicles. Those should have been delivered this week. I know that they are working on upfitting those. I'm not sure when they are approved by council. But rough calculation on 10 sheriff's vehicles outfitted is about $500,000, between 500 and 600,000. I'm telling you today that my fiscal year 25 plan is that I can replace 24 vehicles in the county for $255,000. Nine of those are going to be sheriff's vehicles. And we'll talk through how that's accomplished momentarily. The results of this program are going to be by partnering with Enterprise Fleet Management. The county can leverage its buying power, implement a tighter controlled resale program, and lower their cost of ownership. This will reduce fuel costs by 20% across the county. It'll reduce maintenance costs from $348 on average per vehicle per month to a $74.93 average. Leveraging our open-ended lease will maximize cash flow and recognize equity from vehicles sold as an internal replacement fund for the county. So again, back to the idea that by selling vehicles at a healthier point, that equity, equity will fund the fleet for you instead of asking for additional money year over year for the fleet. By shifting to reactively replacing inoperable vehicles to proactively planning the fleet, the county of LaPorte will be able to replace its entire vehicle, an entire fleet over the next five years. And the net sustainable impact of this program will be $75,000 per year once fully implemented. Any questions on that page?
I got a question for, probably a little, little later on, but I can ask it right now. You mentioned Sheriff's Department vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Pursuit vehicles. How do you determine what a pursuit vehicle is? Because there's a lot, excuse me, there's a lot of vehicles out there and of course, they have to be heavy duty.
Absolutely.
So you go with a manufacturer that, just a manufacturer that does that, correct?
Absolutely. So as part of our program, what we do is we will communicate with department heads four times a year. One of those meetings is called the Fleet Analysis Meeting, is where we sit down with Sheriff Hague and Major Cicero, if he wants to be in it as well, and we plan the fleet a year in advance. So in our workshop that we had a couple of months ago, we actually, I had talked with Ron previously, showed him a total vehicle comparison of what it's going to cost to run a Dodge Durango Pursuit versus a Ford Explorer Pursuit versus the Ram SSV Pursuit. We give him the data to make a decision that he wants to move forward on. So even in this scenario today, we gave Ron all of that data and he decided that he wanted to move forward with a Ford Explorer Pursuit. And that's going to be the same process for years to come.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Any additional questions on the synopsis?
So under the objectives involved, you'd call out $2.3 million in savings in 10 years.
Yes, sir.
What does that look like next year? What does that look like three years down the road?
Go ahead and turn to the last page and we can kind of jump ahead.
Sorry, guys.
Oh, you're totally fine. So in this middle portion, where that yellow bar is, that yellow bar is what we are calculating is happening today. So all kind of line item on that one. So today, we're estimating that you're spending about $600,000 in acquisition. We're not necessarily selling vehicles today. Your pursuit vehicles might go to Gov Deals and get a couple thousand dollars. A lot of the city vehicles and highway, parks and rec, juvenile department, those will more or less get scrapped. So sold for, you know, $5, $1,500 here and there. So we're not seeing a lot of resale gains calculated today inside the budget. The maintenance budget is estimated at $413,000 across the analysis that we've conducted. And the fuel budget is around $500,000 across the county vehicles. So we're estimating today that your all-in fleet budget is just over $1.5 million per year. Now, what you see from that yellow bar down is the estimated conservative impact that our program is going to have year over year. So what you'll see is a general consensus is that as we replace the older vehicles, the maintenance numbers drop, the fuel numbers drop, and your overall fleet budget, especially in years five through 10, balance out and allow us to plan for those years in advance. So what we see is that we'd be able to sit down with you this time next year when you're having conversations around the budget. And we'll talk through, you know, what makes sense for fiscal year 26. And maybe it's not 1.1 million dollars. Maybe we need to cut a little bit here or there, but that's what the partnership is for, is for us to put eyes on the entire budget, maintenance and fuel included, and help you proactively plan around those purchases.
I got a real quick question on page, second to last.
Absolutely.
You referenced, you referenced that it's, it's light duty vehicles?
Yes.
But on page, second to last page, Western Star Freightliner MAC International. Are you including those old, older highway vehicles in your?
Analysis? No, sir. So if you look, the fleet size on the second to last page is 131. That is the fleet that I was given by every department head. Now, this was conducted before I added juvenile and parks and recs. So there's a couple more additional vehicles in that that aren't on this page. But in the actual analysis, so back to the last page, we have 99 that were analyzed financially. And that excludes those heavy duty vehicles.
The highway department are excluded.
Highway departments, heavy duty, yes, sir.
Big heavy duty.
Now, they're, they're standard half-ton, three-quarter ton, one-ton pickups. Those are included in this.
Okay. For a sense of scales, so like the Tahos that are used by EMS, that'd be something that would fall under your scope of work.
Yep, the only exclusion we have are anything class eight or larger. So class eight is going to be like a semi, your Freightliners, your MAC trucks. We can do anything that's up to a class seven pickup truck. So that's going to be.
One ton.
A little bit bigger than a one ton, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
And you anticipate this savings to go out past 10 years?
We do. We calculate a net sustainable impact. So once it's fully implemented, meaning you're, you're starting in year six, because it's around a five-year cycle plan, it's going to be a net savings of around $75,000 over what we're doing today. So if you take these last five years of the, the impact and you average those out, it comes out to the $75,000.
That's my question.
Yes, sir.
On page three, I read what you just said. County of LaPorte will be able to replace all its vehicles over the course of five years while creating an annual savings of $75,000.
Yes, sir.
But you also say on the last page that you're predicting 2.3 million over 10 years.
The 2.3 million is the net impact of all 10 years calculated? So that's like in year one, because you have such a dramatic drop in maintenance and fuel cost, year one, you're saving $654,000 versus year 10, you're saving 278. So the 2.3 million is.
Oh, wait a minute, slow down here.
Yep.
In year one, we're saving 600,000.
Yes, sir.
In year 10, we're saving how much?
278.
So how do you come up with this? So how do you come up with this seventy-five thousand per year figure then?
The seventy-five thousand is once fully implemented, so the average of the last five years of the program, of this conservative calculation. So the term once fully, in years one through five, we are selling off the county's fleet today and slow-rolling the implementation of that. At year five, every vehicle in the fleet, minus those heavy duties, ambulances, fire trucks, will be managed by Enterprise. So year six is when we start that fully, meaning like we are all in, every vehicle's an enterprise vehicle, and we're selling them every five years. So between years one and five, you see a dramatic impact because of the drop in maintenance and fuel cost. In years five through ten, those start balancing out, and you see a more sustainable impact where you can plan the budget around it.
I still don't understand the math. If every year is more than seventy-five thousand, how do you get an annual savings of seventy-five thousand?
The annual savings is the last five years. We don't, again, it's, it's a net sustainable impact. If we were to calculate those first five years in the program, it would show you a sustainable impact of two or three hundred thousand dollars. And my goal here is to be as accurate as possible. I don't want to, what's the term, overpromise and underdeliver. The seventy-five thousand is a conservative estimate of full implementation.
Question on the, on the maintenance savings, it looks like here, current maintenance costs are estimated at four hundred and thirteen thousand. And by year five or six, they're going to be down to eighty-eight thousand. How do you achieve those sort of savings? That's like almost an eighty percent reduction.
That reduction comes from operating a newer fleet. So what you see is today, and actually Bob, Bob kind of validated that data for me, is what you're seeing today is all your vehicles over a hundred thousand miles are breaking down left and right, and those breakdowns are transmissions, right, brakes and tires, engine issues, air conditioners. And we don't have the allocation to replace those. So what happens is we fix them, your average transition, transmission repair today is around seven thousand dollars. We fix them, put them back on the road, and those vehicles continue to operate and then continue to break down. When you transition to this program, the first three years of every vehicle is going to be covered by warranty. So the only cost the county incurs with the newer fleet, especially at year five, is preventative maintenance, oil changes, brakes and tires. You do have a slight risk in year four and five between that sixty and a hundred thousand mile point. But even then, you're not going to necessarily have a transmission go down or, or an engine go out, right? You're not incurring those high-dollar repairs. So that eighty percent reduction comes from, A, the goodwill and the warranty from the manufacturers picking up all of that cost, and the county only paying for the last two years of that maintenance.
Would we continue to perform maintenance in-house as we do now, or would this be something that Enterprise takes care of and subs out somewhere else?
Absolutely. So we have that, what we would do is, we would set up what's called a maintenance management plan. So I would give the maintenance facilities, both Highway and Bob at the Sheriff's Maintenance Department, our software to log track and oversee the maintenance data. What that also does is allows county vehicles to go to local vendors and get maintenance done at the enterprise price, and that same data will flow through the website for every department head to track accordingly. So what that can do is, your, your county departments and county vehicles that aren't driving as much and, and more sitting and kind of get put on the back burner behind the Sheriff's Department, those can go to local vendors and get serviced at a really good price because they're going to have the enterprise negotiated contracts. And then both local maintenance facilities can continue doing what we're doing, and we'll be able to track and oversee that data for you.
What, what do our four mechanics do then?
So.
Farming that out.
So, and I asked Bob that question. I, I asked Bob Parks, I said, what, you know, if, if we get rid of all of those high-dollar repairs and all of that complicated maintenance, what does that allow you to focus on? He said that allows him to focus on preventative maintenance more, so not being late to oil changes, not being late to brakes and tires, which is then escalating to higher dollar repairs. And it allows him to focus more on the heavy-duty vehicles on his end, like the ambulances and fire trucks. The only kind of piece I'll add to that is Bob will still continue doing the outfit, and that was his request. Go ahead.
So, we get, we get this information, cars get traded, and I get a whole history of the car. We're never late for oil change. If I've got the history, we're not late for oil change, we're not late for batteries and tires, those are not something we're late on. So that's not going to be a preventive maintenance thing that he's going to be able to do. We have plenty of time to do that. So that's not a case of these cars being neglected because of that. If it was neglected, I understand it, but they're not being neglected. They're getting the oil changed on time. I have the, I get the data, I look at all these cars when they get traded in.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, I was just, that was communication from.
I know, they say that, but they're getting their work done.
Okay, and, and I don't doubt that.
We, we do quicker oil changes than the average person does anyway, which is fine. We change tires more often, which is fine. We have, we have no problem with that in the cars.
My, my request on that would be where the data is.
They've got it computerized, they, they send me the whole data, I got it up. People use computers and you can, you can pull it down, get the information, and the Sheriff's Department always sends it to me. I get it every year for the last twenty-four years.
Okay.
So I've never had a problem getting data.
Okay, when I asked for the data, I was told it didn't exist. So that's, that's my only request.
They send us a CD or whatever, all the vehicles are trading in.
Okay.
Their maintenance, so.
Awesome.
Mr. President, can I ask a question that might be helpful to the council? How do you, how do you guys get paid?
How do we get paid?
Get a percent of savings, or do you get a fixed amount relative to the number of vehicles, the size of the fleet?
Absolutely. So we have a government RFP completed by Sourcewell, and County of Laporte is a Sourcewell partner. We get a fixed point one percent management fee across the fleet. And that's just the amount of vehicles that we manage for the county.
Point one percent of?
The capitalized price of the vehicle.
Is it, is it broke down to a monthly payment, or is it a yearly payment?
It is a monthly, and, and we can assess that however, if, if it goes directly to the county, or if it's line item to every individual department, we can factor that in however works best for the county and those departments.
Follow-up if I could?
Sure.
What, what's to prevent you from, with all due respect, from being incentivized to maximize the capitalized value of the fleet? Because that maximizes what you're paid, even though that may not be what's cheapest for the county.
What incentivizes us is.
Current conflict, perhaps.
Absolutely. You could easily go to a dealership and look at your price compared to mine, and if mine is higher, all reputations out the window, correct? So you would compare the service that we're providing, the customer service significance that our partnership has, the price that you're getting, capitalized price from Enterprise Fleet Management, and if you're finding better in the market, then that, our reputation is shot at that point, right? Because we're telling you that we can buy vehicles at your price, we can manage them better, we can provide a cheaper maintenance, run a healthier fleet, give you more resale value. Those are all part, promises of the partnership. And if at any point you feel like that partnership's not being executed, then we're not a good partner. And that's what I'm here to, to talk to you about today is, is the partnership.
But how would we leave the partnership? Once we're in it and we've liquidated all of our, our vehicles, is there really a way for the county to ever leave this once it started?
Absolutely. Either the leases can ride out, and you can write the term, and everything is, is good to go once those leases are done. Or you could buy out the leases. And that would just be the difference between the residual and what the vehicle is worth.
Mr. President? Can we, is there any?
No question, go ahead, Mike. Go ahead first.
No, I was just going to expound on Councilman Yagowski's question about oil changes. I agree a hundred percent. They, we can't, our mechanics are great out there, and they, they stay, they stay busy, but they do get everything done on time. But will they do other type things like brakes, or is that going to be farmed out? Brakes, tires was mentioned.
Yeah, none of it has to be farmed out. You have the ability to go to local vendors, but if the county maintenance techs wanted to work on the entire fleet, that's okay as well. There, there is no having to go to a third party or having to go to local vendors. It just gives you that route as an emergency. Let's say a tech is sick or whatnot, and they get backed up, it gives you that as an outlet. By no means do we want to take work away from the local maintenance facilities.
Does your maintenance, do your maintenance figures assume that we're going to do it in-house, or do they assume that we'll go?
Those assume that you will do it in-house.
Okay, so this doesn't include salary costs of, of the maintenance workers?
It does not, it's just the parts and labor of the maintenance being done.
Gotcha.
Since it's seven o'clock and we have our budget hearings, we're going to go on over this stuff here anyway, can we go to the next meeting with this? With this, yeah, motion. Hold over to the next meeting.
Yes, the budget hearing.
After budget hearings, that we have, we have nowhere at as far as numbers are concerned.
Is there a second?
A second now.
Motion by Mr. Gauske, second by Mr. Karanka to hold us over to our August meeting, after budget hearings, which are tomorrow and the next day, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
And you can feel free to attend the budget hearings if you'd like.
Absolutely. At the bottom of this page is my outlay for year one. So at the very bottom of, sorry, the last page is my estimated year one cost for twenty-four vehicles. I just wanted to give you that data when you're having budget hearings, that way you know what this program would look like. So for twenty-four vehicles across the fleet, that's nine pursuit vehicles. That's two pursuit pickup trucks for the police department. Five pickups for Highway. Two Suburbans, one for the Chief of Police, and then one for Coroner, since those are, is that correct? The Chief of Police and Coroner.
Sheriff.
Sheriff, I'm sorry, the Sheriff and the Coroner, my apologies.
I like that. He's a little sensitive about that. Just saying.
And then.
Can't pay pretty hard for that job.
Yeah, and then minivans for the Juvenile Center, the Juvenile Department as well. So that total outlay was two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the first year, for those twenty-four vehicles.
Any other questions or comments? Are you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of the Council President's authorization to replace positions. It's the Animal Shelter, Animal Control Officer, I mentioned that in my report. Laporte County Highway Department Labor Position and Laporte County Building Maintenance Maintenance Position and Office Manager.
Mr. President, these are all, these are all just for replacement.
Correct.
I motion all three of them to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gauske, second by Mr. Cunningham, any other questions coming? Are you not all in favor, say aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is job evaluation recommendations, Monique Thomas.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I make a motion, we table this for, till next meeting, because we're going to have our budget hearings today and tomorrow. They did their job, that's what they're supposed to do, and then they bring it to us, so we, we can, we can put the numbers into our budget for twenty-twenty-five, so that's.
So, so is a.
Motion to.
Before we make a second on that, is, is a motion actually in place, or would it be, because during budget hearings, we're going to plug each one of those in.
Right.
And speak with the department heads about those. So is it table actually the correct? You see what I'm saying?
Well, I guess what, you were going to hear recommendations today from Ms. Thomas as to certain positions that are going to change classification.
We're going to do that during budget hearings instead.
Yeah, we did.
So, so you don't have to move, you can take it off the agenda? You can move to amend the agenda, or you can table it till after?
Motion to hear this during budget hearings.
That'll work good.
You're good with that?
The one question I have is, do we have those numbers in front of us when we look at the budget?
Everybody's supposed to be there for department heads when they come up.
So we'll be looking for, for cost for each of these items as they get plugged in?
Monique, is there going to be a, is there going to be a, a cost sheet attached to this to show the, the increases? That'll be from each department head should be bringing that, that's what I'm saying. Not you specifically, but each department head, subject to the approval.
Correct.
Should be getting that.
So for us, it's on us to ask the department heads as they approach to make sure that these respective ones.
He's had that with us.
It's up to the department head to say, my items are.
Hi, Grandma Rosa, the, the commission, I just want to ask, doesn't it have to be approved first? So I mean.
You can approve it.
Have to approve the positions for?
We can do that during the budget hearings.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So the budget hearings, we can approve or deny, take off? You know, it's, it's a regular meeting.
And we can delay till twenty-twenty-five.
Right. So we have a motion and a second to have during budget hearings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approaching appropriations, transfers and requests. Laporte County Clerk. These are transfers, requesting transfer from the General Fund Election Board Budget. She's transferring money for meals and precincts, for precinct boards and for polling places. Twenty-three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Do you want to talk, Heather?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Yagowski.
I'm good.
Is there anything you want to add? No? All those in favor, say aye?
No.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Requesting appropriation from Campaign Enforcement Fund for compensation of witnesses in the amount of one hundred dollars.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, second by Mr. Molenhour. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laporte County Community Corrections Requesting Transfer From General Fund, Gas, Fuel and Oil, Remaining Balance of the Tech Eighty-Four Service Agreement in Amount of nineteen hundred dollars. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Holly Grushka, Administrative Coordinator at Community Corrections, and we're asking to, to transfer nineteen hundred dollars. The bill came in higher than we expected.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Karanka.
I didn't get a chance to talk to him. We can, we'll do that in just one second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? One quick question, and this is not on the topic, but your grant cycle.
Yes.
We've, we've talked to the director for several years now, and the grant has come up short in the tracking devices.
There was some short, and there was also some they didn't, they didn't apply, didn't, they didn't get the money.
And since the grant cycle is a year out, so it, it takes a while for that to correct?
Right.
And so in this being July?
Long years ago, so your July to July is your, so we should, we should be getting the grant money for this July for last year.
Is, is the shortage been corrected, is what we're asking?
For the Tech Eighty-Four or for, or for the grant itself?
For the whole budget.
For the grant, that's been corrected.
Yeah, okay. So if it's been corrected, then we should be receiving the monies July first, because we didn't receive the monies last year, July first.
We receive money every month from the grant, for the grant.
Well, no. Where, where we had to fund like a two hundred thousand dollar shortage in the past, that's correct.
That's corrected.
Okay, I think we're on the same page. You're just, we're not getting reimbursed for past money.
Right, but right now you won't, you won't be coming back for the future because we got full grant.
Right.
That you know.
Yes.
Don't ever, don't ever agree never to come back.
True, true. But we are on track.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item is Laporte County Sheriff or Chief of Police, as he likes to be called. Question additional appropriation from Lit for overtime. Oh, wait, wait, let's go up to the Sheriff's Pension Fund. That was an item that.
That was tabled, and.
It wasn't.
Was it? Okay.
But we talked about pulling that off until after budget hearings, just so that we have a better understanding. Does anybody have a motion to pull that off the?
I made the motion.
I talked to the sheriff about that, he's fine with it.
Second.
Motion by Adam Karanka, second by Yagowski to remove the Sheriff's Pension Fund from the agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is ninety thousand dollars for overtime and six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for payroll deductions. Can I, can I ask why those are split?
They had requested ninety thousand, so we just put down how much the payroll deductions would be. So either it's ninety thousand and the payroll deductions come out of it, or if they need ninety thousand, then it would be ninety-eight.
Those two things go to different places, right? The salaries for the overtime would go into a one-hundred account within their budget, and the payroll deductions would go into a different place?
No, wherever the overtime is funded, the deductions need to come out from.
Okay. So Mr. Sheriff.
It just creates.
Go ahead.
Was the ninety thousand including your, the other deductions and benefits?
No, I'm just looking for ninety thousand. If you want to give me the ninety-six, I'm pretty confident that we can do the ninety thousand, barring any unforeseen circumstances. You know, I can sit here and tell you ninety thousand will get us through, and we could have an incident tonight as we walk out this door that we could burn through half of that, I mean.
Mr. Yagowski. You're not promising me to hurry.
I'm not going to make any.
The question is, one of, one of the issues that come up here is the, a public unrestricted opioid. How much money is in, in that budget?
It's in our thing, it's considerable amount, we haven't really spent from it.
Okay.
Opioid unrestricted, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
And as far as we know, there's no restriction on, unrestricted for this particular item?
Correct, and, and it's going to Sheriff.
Okay, so I make a motion for ninety thousand dollars out of the opioid unrestricted.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, is there a second?
When it's twelve thirty-seven by now.
Second. Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments?
Question. What, what was the original with the, what was your original budget with the overtime?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
That was, that was the only time, well, I know you were in here for the courthouse security overtime.
We were in here last month, I believe it was last month, for jail overtime. This month, we come for merit overtime.
And then there was a time for courthouse, I think, too, but.
Not this year, not, yeah, not this year. I believe that was the end of last year in which we had to for courthouse security.
Okay, and are you utilizing, this is probably mostly shift vacancies?
Shift vacancies due to a couple of reasons. Shift vacancies due to a couple of, uh, reasons, one, we've had two, uh, individuals out, had, had some major surgery, which have got them out for extended period of time, uh, such as hip replacement. Uh, we've had some military commitments, we've had a couple of deputies that have, um, had babies recently, or their spouses have had babies, so they're out on maternity leave, so to speak, but we have been, uh, readjusting some personnel, we've removed some of the detectives out of the detective bureau, put them back on the streets to help fill some of these gaps, to help keep this overtime cost down.
Good, well, that's what I was getting at, and, um, the SROs that aren't in schools right now?
The SROs, matter of fact, one's working the afternoon shift as we speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. I just wanna give you kudos, the, uh, security at the fair this year with the sheriff's deputies handling, I believe, a hundred percent of it.
A hundred percent.
Um, it, it, it went very well.
Yeah, thank you, we're, uh.
When you, when the EMS out there.
Is working on the final numbers as we speak on that, but it looks like by going to this venture in which we are gonna handle everything, we're looking to save the fair about twenty thousand dollars.
And, and kudos to the, to the incident that happened out there, the quick response from, from your staff and from EMS and from some people at the Fair Board.
Right.
Everything was handled very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Coroner Requesting Additional Appropriation For Autopsies In Amount Of Fifty Thousand Dollars.
Yes, sir, um, I've currently spent, um, a hundred and thirty-four thousand of my hundred and fifty thousand original budget. Um, I'm hoping this fifty thousand will get me to the end of the year. Last year, um, we spent two hundred and thirty-eight thousand for autopsies. So, as the numbers of autopsies go up, so do the cost.
One of the questions Lynn was, um, are we getting, are we getting reimbursed by the state prison and other counties when? I, I know when we have to pay for an autopsy for somebody outside the county, but when it's reversed, do we get reimbursed for those?
We do get reimbursed on the prison autopsies, um, that's out of a different fund, it's, uh, funded out of, uh, prison autopsy fund. I believe that's a four oh seven six account. Um, I have only billed out one autopsy from another county, um, that was to Saint Joe County, although I have just put in for payment for her for, I believe, the ninth autopsy over there.
Okay. Mr. Gauske.
Question Lynn, I'm sorry. Question Lynn, uh, you showed, you showed us with a hundred and eighty-four total, um, deaths and a hundred and fifty-two were natural, which leaves thirty-two miscellaneous, so for the miscellaneous, I believe you said eleven were overdoses.
Right.
So, of this, what, what are we, what are we doing the autopsies on?
Okay, we're doing autopsies on motor vehicle accidents, um, drownings, uh, overdoses, and there are some natural deaths that if we are not able to determine by a medical history or a doctor's history, we autopsy those people too to get a cause of death.
What's the current cost of an autopsy?
Three thousand dollars.
And the perp, the perp, the purpose of, uh, who that was, I mean.
Too, too close.
Too close, sorry.
The purpose of, no, you can leave it on.
The purpose of, of, uh, of doing some of these, okay, if we have a drowning, you confirm they were drowning, they had a drowning?
Well, we don't know if they had a heart attack before they went under the water or not.
Or drugs or alcohol or?
Right, it, you know, there could be many factors.
I understand, we, I understand, this was a lot of it was driven by the, uh, uh, judges that were just ruling that we had to pay for, but now it seems like we're getting more and more of just miscellaneous. Is that, do we have to be that open about doing them, is what I'm asking, it's a huge cost, that's.
Yes, that's a question of the coroner.
It is, it is a huge cost, it's probably eighty percent of my budget.
But it's, but it's been going up steady fast, are, are we doing more than we used to, as I, did we always do, uh, naturals, do, do we always do? Cause I, you know, I know a certain age you didn't do one, uh, there was, at one point you didn't do any at a certain age.
Right, under eighteen, it's an automatic autopsy.
That I can understand.
Um. Motor vehicle accidents, and this is one that I'm, I have a little trouble with, but, uh, the sheriff's department orders an autopsy on a passenger, or wants an autopsy on a passenger in a motor vehicle accident that dies, I'm assuming to be able to prosecute that case. Um, I just paid for one in South Bend where a woman was on the back of a three-wheel motorcycle that was rear-ended by a driver. She died, and they wanted an autopsy, her injuries were plain to see. I would not have done an autopsy.
I'm agreeing.
Sheriff's Department spoke to the South Bend coroners and requested an autopsy, so.
I'm agreeing, it's just that over the years I noticed it's almost tripled, and the, and it's not you, I'm not saying necessarily, but the reasons are tripling, and that, and they're not anything different, you had drownings, you had overdoses, you had suicides, so on and so forth.
Well, up until about two and a half, maybe three years ago, we never autopsied overdoses, we did a toxicology study on them, and then suddenly the prosecutor wanted to be able to have that information to, you know, conclude that there was nothing other than the drug overdose, to be able to prosecute cases, that's when the numbers started really going up on our autopsies.
And, and just so everybody understands, the fifty thousand dollars is sixteen autopsies, so I mean.
Right.
It's not a.
But this is second to, uh. It's not just once, Mr. Novak, I do understand that.
You guys, yeah, I, I, I know, but.
It gets ridiculous at some point, I'm telling you this already.
Who, I guess, who, who's the body that determines who gets autopsied and who doesn't?
Well, it's supposed to be me, but that's not always the case, like I said, if the sheriff's department says, we want an autopsy on this person, you know, it's difficult for me to say, well, you don't need one, because then they go to the prosecutor, and the prosecutor will order it, and then it's out of my hands.
Got it. What's your pleasure?
As many issues as there are, I guess it's as simple as motion to approve.
From where?
From, we have fifty thousand, what are we looking at, wind tax? Prove it, we got wind tax.
Wind tax, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, ARP three point seven nine.
Let's go with wind tax.
Motion by Mr. Caranka out of wind tax. For a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenhour. Any other questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Six two.
No, I take it back, that's way too many people.
Four two. Four two.
Four, got it, got it, alright, alright.
You said six two.
God, math.
Thank you.
Math wasn't a pre, got it, was it? Thank you. Um, next item is requesting appropriation from the coroner's non-reverting fund for grant match for six thousand dollars, this is that opioid, uh, autopsy study that the Health Foundation, um, is throwing in on correctly?
Motion to approve.
Yes, it is, this is for the first year, I had initially requested, uh, for both years. I believe Mrs. Graves did not see the second page, that's why it says only six thousand, it's supposed to be twelve thousand for the total of two years.
We can put that on next month's agenda, so it's all done.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham. Second. Second by Mr. Gauske. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next item is Lepore County Building Maintenance Requesting Additional Appropriation From All The Different Accounts. First item is ceiling repair. And thank you for the email that you sent out, so.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, and you?
Good. Um, I'm Cheryl Listensky, Director, and this is Angie Davis, the, uh, interim Assistant Director for Building Maintenance.
Good evening.
So, um, I did give you the, um, following jobs I gave, um, to you, did you want me to go through them individually?
So the ceiling repairs, the one out of the Community Corrections?
Yes, it is.
Where the inmates crawled up through and got into the women's dorm?
Correct.
Right, so it needs to be secured, put back, and, and currently that restroom is blocked off.
Correct.
The do, that dorm is blocked, correct?
Also, yeah, both areas.
What's the extent of the repair, obviously ceiling, but, I mean, it's not a drop ceiling, what we have in here?
Um, is, uh, well, the, um, affected the smoke wall, um, which is the drywall truss, um, it stops the fire from the building being engulfed, so.
It penetrated the fire stop.
Got it.
And, uh, new exhaust via needs to be put in.
Real, real quick question, was that yours, did they, did they do an analysis, find out who did it?
I think they know who did it, don't they?
They did.
Did we, did we go after these people, are they still in Community Corrections?
It's a question for Community.
I didn't ask, I, I, I. I'm just asking a question, I'm not asking them.
Right.
Community Corrections, we, did we go after these people, are they still, are they being a privilege to be in this program?
You think they would get it done?
You think they'd get it?
I wondered the same thing.
Court orders before, we never get a good answer.
The cost. Right, okay, can we ask this question, be referred to then by Community Corrections, please? Again, this has nothing to do.
Are you looking at me, Mr. Novak?
I am.
What does that have to do with funding?
Just write that down, just write that down.
Okay.
So we're looking to, about the offenders?
Correct.
That destroyed, that destroyed, and whether we've pursued any type of reimbursement?
More than reimbursement, why aren't they removed from the program for committing a crime while they're in Community Corrections? Send their rehrens to jail. And then the judges should be issuing that.
A restitution order.
Restitution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, see? Good job.
Thank you.
So what's your pleasure?
Um, I got a question, I don't know if we're considering these jointly or separately, but, um, have we selected vendors for all of these already?
Um, the quotes I have, yes, are.
And multiple quotes were solicited for each of these items?
Excuse me?
Were multiple quotes solicited for each of these items?
No, um, for the first three of them, the Community Corrections, JSC, and the Courthouse Traffic Department, they were all under fifty thousand, so I did not get another quote for those.
Who was selected for the work for all three of those?
Lepore County Project Management.
Thank you.
So what's your pleasure? For the public, Mr. President, it's repair the damage to the drywall in the attic, repair damaged drywall in the bathroom ceilings, install one-quarter inch plywood and five-eighths impact resistant drywall, finish paint, new drywall, existing block walls, repair exterior and interior vent, relocate sprinkler heads to accommodate new plywood and drywall, install new high-security lights as discussed.
It's easy part, are these all Community Corrections?
No.
Which ones are?
No.
This is the first one for.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
The second one's Community.
Uh, the JSC.
Juvenile Center, second one.
And what happened there?
Um.
I would have stayed decently. That's what I, that's what I was doing till.
Oh, you're talking. I'm trying, I'm trying to say if they were together, I could, we could combine them, that's the only reason I asked this question, but go ahead, they're not.
What do you wanna do?
Question for, one more question while we're at it, I guess, um, the security glass, what's the reason that?
That's, we're doing these one at a time.
Okay.
One at a time. Ceiling repair, the options are table, hold over to next month, or motion to approve, or motion to deny?
Motion to approve.
Out of?
Out of?
Out of. Wind tax.
Cause I already took fifty out of wind tax, too. What'd you do earlier?
It should be one thirty-eight now.
I guess ARP. Yep.
ARP.
ARP.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Molenhour, second by Mr. Caranka. Any other questions or comments?
Is it sure as fun as? No.
Are you none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Two nays.
Two nays.
Thank you.
Next item is toilets and repair a leak, forty-one thousand dollars, explain why these toilets are expensive? These are not your average American standard toilet?
Right, um, they're institutional toilets, just like we would have in the jail, um, obviously they have to, um, I'm assuming they have to be special for the fact that.
Wall mounted and everything, and.
Yes.
And to be blown.
I guess that was the question, why are we replacing, that's more of the, I know, I know what, what that.
Okay, the resonance damaged on one is completely taking, um, removed, and the other one, um, is also damaged, um, it's bent, and it does not work, and also the, and the E-two, um, the pipe chase has a leak also, other than the toilet needing repaired.
Okay, can we ask that question too, please?
Isn't the same area as the ceiling, same?
No, this is juvenile.
This is juvenile services.
Well, this is juvenile services, okay.
You add juvenile services to that same?
Yeah. And this, um, has been, um, not in working order for over two years. The judge actually has requested for, um, I got a letter from Dion, that it to be fixed for the fact, um, they're overbooked there in the correctional facility. So.
JV?
Alright.
Six people there.
JV's overbooked?
For the, uh.
It could be for the secure side.
And how many people do they have in secure side today?
She, she does.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Add that to your list.
Wait, wait, hold on one second, so this event happened two years ago?
Yes, they've been inoperable two years.
We're not talking about the natural, the one that just broke down, then, because it broke down, we're talking about the ones that were damaged by JV. That's all we're asking for, the natural part, she had one that just happened, you know, it's because it broke down, but I'm asking, and that was two years ago, but, but you're talking about the one.
Both of them have been inoperable for two years, both cells, so, two, E-two and E-seven.
How many cells are there?
Um, I believe Dion had told me that there was fourteen, and maybe twelve are operable.
Okay, so, so the E-two and E-seven were both, were both damaged, or one was natural, just happened because it got older, whatever, were both these damaged?
Both of them damaged by resonance.
Okay. Brought it a letter, thank you.
What's your pleasure?
Wanna give us the four things again?
Here's the four things we can do. Very similar to the last. Table, motion to approve, hold over to next month, or deny?
Motion to approve out of ARP.
Motion by Mr. Caranka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenhour, is there any other questions or comments?
Question, um, walk me through how you know that this is the best price, if you've only received one quote, and it may be the case that you're only required to receive one quote, and I'm not picking any particular vendor here, I have no reason to question the estimate necessarily, but how do we know we're getting the best price? What makes you confident?
I'm confident because, um, for me personally, I feel that they're a preferred vendor, I mean, um.
Elaborate on preferred vendor, what does that mean?
I mean, for, for the fact that they, um, respond quickly, they're.
Andy?
I mean, they do a great job, you can see that in the annex, so.
Absolutely, they do a great job, I guess.
So, and I trust them.
How would other companies go about becoming a preferred vendor?
Um.
Would they contact your office?
Huh?
If somebody else wanted to be a preferred vendor, would they contact your office, say, I'd like to?
Yes.
Get involved in on this, or blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, I mean, if I had.
I mean, I meet with vendors once a month.
To get county business, how would I go about doing it?
Meet with me.
If Steve wants fixed toilets in the JV center.
I'd love to go and block it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Are you none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I got two nays.
I got two nays.
Two nays.
Question, I know this doesn't have anything to do with you or probably even me.
My microphone.
Is juveniles, a juvenile tore this up in a cell, did they just put him in another cell? You don't know that, I understand.
Could you write that down, Mr. T Martino?
How do we? Justify county taxpayers.
Coming to bed.
Letting juveniles or adults come in and tear up county property and then just putting them in more county property.
In, in Mr. Campbell's defense.
I said he probably wasn't even there.
He tried to, he called me twice, I called him back twice, we were playing phone tag this afternoon. He was going to talk about this, to give me more information on this, I could have asked those questions, but I wasn't able to.
I do have a letter from Dion, if you would like me to read it.
My, my question is, does the letter say anything about the disposition of the juveniles that did the destruction?
It was before his time, my.
Exactly, that's why.
I'd be surprised if it did.
The taxpayers.
Right.
Are just rewarding bad behavior if we don't do anything to correct it.
Right. Write that down. Good. Got it, all right. Next item is install counter. This is in.
Superior three.
Yes, the Lepore courthouse, second floor.
The reason for that counter?
Uh, for security when you walk into their office, it's open, um, they handle money, cash.
Which office?
So, this is, they moved into a new office and a- as she stated, the desks are there and people can just walk up to any desk there is. There's no counter separating it, um, and the, the glass, I asked them to separate out the glass. Because it, it could be, I'm, I'm not saying that this is a high, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, they're, they're not necessarily handling money and everything else, so the glass could be something that you do at a different time.
Or put plexiglass on.
Right.
So. So question, in the past, up to now, I can understand these are, but you have in past installed counters your department has.
She has what?
In the past, maintenance has installed counters.
Right.
Why can't we install the counter?
I don't know if they have somebody.
We have people that do construction, they pound things together, I mean, we've had departments that put together, they have, this is not new.
How long is the counter?
Um. We, our maintenance staff is pretty much maintenance, other than Doug who's HVAC, they're not contractors. Um, they have installed, I believe, a few counters.
They have.
Um.
But I don't believe they've done it recently, I'm just, I, I'm just.
And right now, we are, we are shorthanded, we are understaffed to, to where if we pull them out right now to install our.
You're looking at just to keep them from the whole office, you're just looking for a counter, I'm sorry, a counter like this.
And a counter that's about twenty eight feet long, maybe, right?
Maybe.
Thirty.
This feet, this counter I'm looking at here, you think yours is thirty? Is that what you just said?
The.
When you want to build. So we're talking about a thousand dollar a foot to build a counter?
Ridiculous.
That's absolutely ridiculous.
And this is why we get more than one quote.
Go down to total and buy uh two fifteen foot sections of counter and put them.
This is ridiculous.
Legs.
So here's the options.
I, 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 I'm motion deny, I'll make it very.
What is a thousand dollar, which one of the people in this audience has a thousand dollar a foot?
Motion to deny.
In their home.
I don't think this costs that much.
Mr. Gowski had his motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions on the motion deny? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Next item is a security glass for that counter that's not going in.
Table, motion to table.
To second.
Motion by Mr. Gowski, second by Mr. Cunningham to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is purchase two units, two unit, two. Heating units out at the um, this is out at the museum.
Yes, it is.
So these, um, there's three units, two of the three are down.
There, yeah, there's actually four.
Okay, four.
Yes, there's the basement, the main and the um, and the second floor. There's also to, in the back addition, there's also another unit that um does all three floors, but it's not enough to keep it heating and cool.
So.
So the main and the basement is down.
This would be outsourced, this isn't Doug doing it.
Is correct.
Correct, all right. And this is two unit installations also, right?
It's everything, everything.
Okay.
See multiple quotes on this, so what were the prices that came back?
Um, the, the lowest quote was the fifty one, five sixty eight ninety two. Um, then the other quote was like fifty three, a couple thousand more. And then the third quote was sixteen thousand dollars more.
Motion to approve.
Out of, same one?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion by Mr. Mullen our second by Mr. Karaka.
Who was the contract with?
Who's doing, who got the lowest bid?
DA Doug from Mishwaka.
Thank you.
Who are the other two betters or?
The other two was H and G and the third one was Gan Mechanical.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So, and just so. We got it.
I got two nays.
Yep. Right. You know, and, and I just want to say, we're, we're talking about um having these capital projects and things and. We just need to keep this in mind as we're moving forward, so I think that's it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lepore County Park uh Parks um is here for roof replacement for Red Mill. An amount of fifty three thousand nine hundred and eighty four dollars and sixty four cents.
Yeah, there, there's two options there, uh, that was for the metal roof and the other one was for um shingles. Uh, single uh price, the low bid was uh replacing the skylights and everything was twenty nine thousand five twenty five. Uh, the, the roof is not failing, but it is twenty five years old, I think I sent an email to all of you on that, but it, it was put in in nineteen ninety nine. Um, we just replaced the, the roof on the other building that failed on us, this one is starting to show, you can start to see the shine from where.
Is the other one done the same year?
Yeah, um, you, you can start to see the shine from where the, the rocks are starting to come off of the shingles, so it's, obviously it's, it's holding its own, but. You know, twenty five year old roof that's um been out in the weather for, it's, it's time and we need to start really thinking about this. Um, the, the, I would, I'd love to see us put metal on there, it would last longer probably and, and um my ultimate goal would be to put solar panels on there. And, and if we put that metal on, they clamp right onto the, the metal, so it would be, we would save on our electric bill and all of that, but um, you know, I understand.
Might be some grants for that.
Well, the one thing that the risk with that is the fact that's your, what's your snow load on the roof right now and is it, would it be rated for panels too?
Say that again?
For the trust work, would it be, would it be rated to hold the panels as well as the local snow load?
Plus, we must know back and it, it holds it back and wait.
Yeah, good question, I, I don't. I don't know that.
Yeah.
I'm not here to.
No.
Ask for that today, but, but yeah, I, I get, I get what you're saying.
We don't talk solar here.
Hey, that's fine on the roof.
Saving my land.
So what's your preference? So it's like thirty thousand dollars, about thirty three thousand?
Fifty four to fifty four, right. Thirty to fifty four, right.
And I did get, I did get quotes.
Thank you.
You saw that.
It is an absolute beautiful building out there, I mean, it, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to make sure, I'm glad to see doing preventive maintenance instead of, we got a giant leak that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to get to that point and, and that's, yeah.
Motion to approve on ARP.
Second. For what?
For the.
A steel roof for.
Oh, for which? Uh, hmm, I'm not sure.
Twenty thousand, it's a. Twenty four thousand dollar difference.
Hmm.
Twenty three.
Twenty four thousand.
Do you have a preference between the two?
I, I mean, I feel like that's a pretty good price for a, a standing seam metal roof, the other bids were quite a bit higher. And usually the, the metal roofs are well over double, um, what the, the shingles would be.
Right.
I, I mean, I was.
Longer too. Life expectancy.
Yeah, life expectancy, the, the, the um standing seam has at least a thirty year warranty and, you know, shingles are. We're, we're talking about replacing.
Yeah, um, metal roof then. All right, no strong preference either way.
As the um park department liaison, I would prefer to spend the seventy four over the fifty three, but I'm gonna go against it either way anyway, so it doesn't make any difference. As a liaison.
Seventy four.
We have seventy four. Wouldn't you approve? If it's seventy four over fifty three.
And that's what I got.
Fifty three for the metal.
Fifty four for the metal.
Roughly thirty thousand for shingles.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty nine five for shingles.
Where'd I get the seventy four?
I think that was the, uh.
That was with the solar panels.
That's not a bad deal, probably, anyway.
Okay, so my motion would be for the uh, the fifty three nine eighty four for the uh metal roof.
On ARP.
Yeah.
All right, motion by Mr. Keel, second by Mr. Mullen our. Any other questions or comments? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Correct, six to two. Just seeing if you're paying attention. Thank you. Next item is um EMS, this is the vehicle that we did a motion of support on last month. Um, I believe he did get a better um price on it. I do have a question for you. Um, this came up yesterday when we were reviewing the agenda, I thought originally you were taking care of the equipment.
I did, you can take it off.
Oh, wonderful.
That's how you do it.
You say it like this. See how quick it was?
What's your preference? We did a motion of support last month, I don't know, obviously we didn't stick it.
Motion to approve.
Under. Out of.
You, you're taking the ten thousand off, then you don't.
Correct.
Okay.
Out of.
Out of.
Uh, ARP again.
Motion by Mr. Mullen our.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karaka. For the amount of twenty six thousand four fifty five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Lepore County Adult Probation.
Yes, Mr. President.
These are spending of their own funds, I believe Mr. Gowski spoke.
Yes, darling, darling, we looked over the uh caper printer, this is used only by one floor, they did it when we brought in the idea of one floor idea, so it gets used a lot. And it's, it's got its useful life, that's all it is, but they, they, the, the whole floor uses that one. Yeah, sorry, sorry, correct, yeah, they use, they use it all.
As I said, the liaison from the adult probation, I knew Mr. Ira couldn't be here, these are both transfers. And I would make a motion to approve both of them.
And I'll second both those. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Gowski to approve both. Is there any questions?
None.
There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore Health Department.
I'm sorry, was it eight to nothing, sir?
Yes, it was, matter of fact, yes, it was. Uh, quick question, Amanda, the twenty five thousand for lab services, is this for the, when we out, because we're outsourcing, because our lab wasn't there?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr.
Transfer.
Second.
Cunningham, second by Mr. Gowski. The question came up yesterday when we were reviewing the agenda, was it dollar for dollar? In other words, what we were being charged is, did we, are we, we getting charged more than what we were charging the public if they came in with the water?
No, they're, they're honoring our costs.
That's, I just wanted to make sure, all right. Any other questions or comments? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Animal Shelter requesting to spend out of their donation fund twenty three thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Gowski, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Prosecutor request, request an additional appropriation from opioid restriction for the salaries for problem solving court. What do they do for them?
I'm sorry.
The whole thing? You want me to repeat the whole thing?
No, well, no, I, I thought you had another uh different question.
But they're, it's. The salaries.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, uh.
What position, where do they work?
Okay, so I've explained this to some of you, uh, maybe not all of you, but hope, but. Long story short, we have, uh, we have a dedicated problem solving court deputy. So we're looking to move money around for the rest of this year to, to, to scarce up some funds so we can apply to another position. That's having a lack in a grant. This way, we can continue funding the, out of existing funds, that one position have a deputy who is assigned to a very specific thing. Which this fund can only be used for a number of very limited things, the restricted fund. And so uh by being able to fund a deputy for the rest of the year, and we'll talk tomorrow about for twenty twenty five. We'll be able to continue, we'll be able to continue funding the problem solving courts, scarce up some funds. For this grant position for this year and next year. And then that way, the intent is we can, we're able to generate some savings within the general fund without adding any new people. That haven't already been appropriated.
Got it.
Or this budget year, so this, this, this.
This person being is problem solving, i- it absolutely qualifies under the opioid, so.
Right.
Right. All right.
So this position is in general now and it's being moved to opioid restricted?
For the rest of the year, yeah, so, yes, so we can use those remaining funds. When our victim advocate grant ends in October, or starts, ends at September, starts in October. Those additional funds that we have that are already appropriated, the general fund, we can move to fund that victim advocate and then hopefully for twenty twenty five. The additional savings that we create by funding Barb's position through twenty twenty five out of the opioid restricted. We can use that to fund any shortfall, we're trying to, right now, part of the issue is how we, we, when we got the grant. And, and it, I'm just talking, but uh.
I'm glad it's the short version.
Yeah, the long version, uh, but we're, we're doing this so that problem solving court can continue on a sure financial footing because Judge Freeman wants to add some new courts. Like the mental health court, we think it's a great thing, the only issue we had was funding and making sure that we can continue to fund the position for an indefinite length of time.
Got it.
Adam. So are there, are there any steps that we're taking, we, that your office is taking for the grant writing aspect for twenty twenty five to assure that we don't end up with a shortfall next year?
Well, the grant doesn't, so the grant is, we've already, we already know how much money we're gonna get, we, we, we knew we were gonna possibly lose some. So we anticipate, if we can, we're working with, with the, the state now, where we can reconfigure, because the grant, the grant used, the positions from the grant. Used to be totally grant funded. And then ten, and then there were other things, and so we're working on moving money, but any shortfall can either be covered by, it should be able to fit within. Our proposed twenty twenty five budget without creating new positions. And, and if there is, we'll work some voodoo math to make sure that there's not.
Wow.
I don't know if I like the term voodoo math, but I know where he's going.
All right. President. Mr. Gowski.
Motion to approve.
So let me ask you this.
Oh my god. Oh my god.
Hey, I gotta admit.
What happened?
I didn't see that one coming.
No.
No, he's, did you guys see, he was, he was.
Oh, just to approve. Just out of curiosity, is it the twenty six thousand dollars plus benefits? Or is it similar, or you just need twenty-six thousand?
No, it's the benefit, so Barb gets-
Total, I, just yes or no? You need the thirty-one thousand, not the twenty-six?
I need all the money. For the rest of the year. That will cover, that will cover the position for everything for the rest of the year.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, is there a second? I'd jump all over that.
Second. But I'm not gonna point.
So, okay, so now you say that for the rest, here's the, this is July already, so-
You're saying that this job pays sixty?
Sixty thousand?
No, it costs, no, that, it pays, it's fifty-seven, and then whatever benefits are in terms of taxes and perf and whatnot.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
There's always that one.
Got it.
But thank you.
Thank you. LaPorte County Board of Commissioners requests additional appropriation for Fair Security, EMS, and Sheriff's Department. Would you like to explain?
Anything on this?
You wanna explain it?
I would like it explained to us, because we didn't ask to be put on the agenda. This is the second time this year that they-
Wait, wait, let's find out first. Can, may I, may I just, because if it's a matter of people getting paid, or it might be incoming check-
There's no, first of all, there's nothing from the Sheriff's Department who wants the money, and the Commissioners said they don't know about it.
I don't think it's a true appropriate, we're not giving them money. It's incoming money, the Fair Board is reimbursing the county for the-
But this is the second time we get put on the agenda, and we didn't request to be put on the agenda.
This is a-
And I come to work every single day, and I'm here at least eight hours. I'm even here on the weekends, and nobody contacts me to tell me that they're gonna put me on the agenda.
Here would be my suggestion, Mr. Novak, since Mr. Heig was here earlier, why didn't he just do this under his, if, in fact, it was overtime for his employees, right?
When, when I spoke with Sheriff Heig yesterday, he didn't think the total numbers were in.
That's my reason for motion to table.
I'm just-
The total numbers were in, I believe.
I'm just, I'm just-
The reason why it's on here is, they're not going to reimburse it until after the employees get paid, and you can't spend public money without the council approving it.
Mr. President?
So it would be coming from our funds first.
Real quick.
First of all, this is, we don't have a four-hundred account.
No, we don't.
We don't, we don't have a four-hundred account anyway, so, motion to table, most-
Don't have a four-
Second to table, we don't, the council doesn't approve four-hundred accounts.
It's not a four-hundred account, it's a four-hundred fund.
Oh, you said account, I thought you said first.
I never said an account.
All right. You still table it? Still, still second.
We have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor say aye?
But it does get paid out as the first of August roll if it's-
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So, roll them out, please.
Councilman Keel.
Nay.
Councilman, Rosebump's not here, Councilman Mullenauer.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
And Councilman Karanka.
Nay.
Four nays, two ayes.
It's not tabled.
It's not tabled.
So now on the discussion.
Well, do you need that in your motion?
Well, we will, but, but I guess for further clarification, this is to cover their pay until we get reimbursed by the Fair Board.
And if we don't approve this, these individuals will not be paid correctly.
Correct.
Until, until we approve it, but it would be a month later.
Yeah, the contract signed was dated for them to be paid at the end of July.
But that was-
I'm just telling you at the contract sign.
I mean-
So we did sign a contract, but again, I mean, instead of coming to us and explaining to us why this has to be on the agenda and everything, I'm blindsided, and I'm coming to you because I haven't had anything explained to us.
Right.
And again, this has a tendency to happen in the Auditor's Office, that they throw us on the agenda, and we have no idea why we're on the agenda.
I know, I-
So-
A contract was signed, we're fulfilling a contract that you signed.
But it just, it just in the future-
But we didn't-
The sheriff-
Tell us you were putting us on the agenda.
Just let them know so that they can come explain it. Sheriff Heig didn't know he was on the agenda. So-
Nor did EMS.
So, I mean, they could have-
They weren't on the agenda for it.
Well, we apologize if offense is taken, we, I suppose we could have put it on as an auditor's submission, because the commission, the contract was passed already. We viewed it as rather perfunctory.
It's payment for a contract.
Uh, payment for a contract.
Got it. So-
Apology for offense taken.
What's your pleasure?
So, we can wait till the numbers come in.
We're getting reimbursed for it.
Right.
So whatever the number is, it's, that's getting billed to the Ag Association.
The numbers are in. Payroll knows each of the amounts somehow, I don't know if it was on the, uh-
So, so we're getting reimbursed for it. Ag Association is gonna reimburse the county, so it's, it's money in, money out.
So if the numbers are already in, I don't always approve that, haven't paid the bill.
That's what we're doing.
No, not, no.
So if the money is in, why aren't they just paying the bill? If we already got signed contracts, why are we coming today?
Because the Ag Association hasn't been billed yet, because the final numbers from payroll to pay them, then you know what everything is.
So it was a dollar amount per hour, correct?
Right.
And-
Do you know what that amount is?
You have to be.
Not off the top of my head, because I had no idea what-
Comes out to about six thousand nine hundred dollars a day.
Okay.
This affair was eight days, and you divide this figure by eight, you're gonna get sixty-nine-hundred approximately.
Right. But like I said, the Ag Association is paying the bill. This is not taxpayer dollars.
Correct.
This is, the Ag Association is covering the cost for security and EMS to be there.
So then why are we coming before the council?
Because, because there has to be a bill generated, and to get the employees paid, you need to pay them before it goes out, so-
Okay, but again, why does it become a council issue? If we signed a contract, right, wouldn't this just be like any other contract that we signed? We don't, every contract we sign, we don't come before the-
Except the money's not there.
So we're asking for them to front the money.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
So we knew what the dollar amount was, but instead of billing them-
No, no, well, we didn't know until just-
The contract has a dollar amount on it.
But it's per hour, so that all has to be calculated out by how many hours, how many partial hours.
Right.
Everything that goes with it.
The fair ended ten days ago, seven days ago?
Last.
Yeah, I saw that. You only look at that seven-day swing to get the hours.
Okay.
If the hours are in, it's just, okay.
Yeah.
So we run it to take care of the employees, or we can delay it for a month and the employees- Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer, seconded by Mr. Keel. Does it matter where you take it?
Just out of that fund.
It's an appropriation for that fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. What is in there, right?
No, the money's not in there, but-
It's coming out of the Fair Security Fund.
That's where it will all take place, yes.
Thank you.
And you'll let us know if- How, just out of curiosity, how'd you get money in the fair account?
It's not there, you're approving an appropriation, so-
Put it in there.
It will allow it to be negative. You're allowing it to pay out in the negative.
I'm with you.
And they'll reimburse it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? You don't care?
Basically, a transfer.
Money in, money out.
Oh, this is a transfer.
All right, voting for a transfer.
Next item, thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Auditor requesting legal fees sixty-nine-hundred and nine dollars and sixteen cents. This is the Auditor's bills, he submitted them to date for 2024.
Twenty-twenty-three. There was really nothing done in 2024.
I'm just saying, but I think we just got the bills beginning of the year.
Right.
Correct. Anyway, what's your pleasure?
We agree to this.
Motion to approve.
I don't know.
Wrong?
Second.
Need to come with the number first.
Motion by-
Win tax?
Win tax. By, motion out of win tax. Karanka, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer.
I just wanna say one thing, this was never brought to the Commission.
What was never brought to the-
This, um, this legal fees. Just so you're aware.
So would that go on their docket? No? Just leave it? All right, never mind. Never mind. Any other questions or comments?
Question for our council. In your personal legal advice, I would be better off to pay this than to take a chance of having additional legal costs that could exceed this.
Well, I can't say that there not gonna be any legal costs that would exceed this, but I think that this, these bills need to be paid for the reasons that I stated in my attorney letter to you all and the video to you. It's my understanding that hopefully this matter's gonna come to an end. But it's my recommendation that it be paid.
Thank you.
The video was very informative.
It was.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski.
Well, I have no problem paying it, but there is a process, I understand. So if we're gonna reverse the process, I'm just asking a question. And it normally goes in front of the Commissioners, comes to the council, now, if it's going in front of the council first, is this gonna go to the Commissioners? That's all I'm-
Well, I mean, so you, I would envision that you're gonna appropriate it in the Auditor's Office, in their account, and then they're gonna go ahead and do whatever the claims payment process is gonna be going to the Commission.
Got it. Sound good, name? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
From where?
From where?
Next item?
For which fund, I'm sorry, it come from?
Yeah, where'd you say?
Came out of Win Tax.
Win Tax.
Nay.
So you have the Anthem bill that you need to bring up? Don't forget the Anthem.
One nae.
Didn't know you were, sorry, two nays, I didn't know you were gonna take it out of Win Tax, so.
Two nays.
One.
Came out of opioid, I'll go with it, but am I gonna go with it on, at what?
Well, it'd be opioid unrestricted.
Yeah, I, eh-
Okay, nay. Mr. Nays. All right. Next item is the unpaid Anthem bill. This was at the end of the year, there were some unpaid, when we switched away from Anthem, went to a new dental carrier, the unpaid balance is nineteen thousand dollars, and, help me out.
Have it marked there?
It was advertised as takeable from Lit Public Safety. Nineteen thousand, seven ninety-seven and sixty-two cents.
Seven eighty-seven point sixty-two, right?
Not according to the paper.
That's what it was advertised for.
It was advertised out of everything, right?
Right, riverboat.
Everything that had money.
ARP.
Right. So this is a bill that obviously needs to be paid at this point, so. What's your preference?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer.
Which fund, please?
Which fund? ARP.
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 Does that work, sir?
ARP. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka?
Real quick question.
Quick question.
So, I understand that we changed because we had a savings. Is this the twenty thou, was it nineteen thousand X dollars figured out in the savings?
Savings.
This is related to, this is related to the dental plan.
Right, so we changed the dental plans, I've heard, because there's a savings.
To the employee, not to us. We don't pay for dental.
Right.
Employee, it's money in, money out for him.
Okay, so is this, what, and what are we paying this for, then?
This is a settlement on bookkeeping discrepancies and the-
Right.
That the employees had?
And Anthem is no longer the provider.
True, but that the employees had.
Correct.
Correct. That's what I was referencing to.
Okay, thank you.
If, if they weren't removed, and we were still having them on there, then we were-
I get it, but this for the employees had, not the county. This issue's been remedied.
I got it.
Got it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Two nays.
Two.
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 Out of eight?
Two.
Two. Two, yeah. Any council or attorney comments?
I do have a comment. Y'all received notification from Mr. Paycheck that he was leaving as the attorney for the Commission. I'm, I'm gonna be taking over for attorney for the Commission. Y'all are gonna have to decide what you're gonna do. I'm here to assist you in transitioning and finding another lawyer, and I will help that lawyer get up to speed, but if, I'm sure Mr. Schultz is gonna be happy to see me leave after this evening.
He left. He's still best.
He's back there. Oh, there he is. He's turned red. But, uh, we'll, uh, so, any questions?
I do have a question. Have you had enough time to research whether it's legal for you to hold both positions?
It's not illegal, but there would always be the potential for a conflict of interest. And so, if there was a conflict of interest or something would come up, we, you would have to have a dedicated lawyer that you would send it to. Typically, there's not a big conflict, but there could always be a conflict as to the difference between the council and the Commission.
So we could possibly have a contract drawn up that spelled out you represent us unless there's a conflict?
It's a waivable conflict, this is, and I know that legally, this is a waivable conflict.
Right. Mr. Yagowski?
Okay, because, and I'm not saying there's nothing wrong with what we do, but we don't, we go into this for a couple months, we find out we wanna do it, so that's, you're talking August, September, then by the time you get somebody, it's October, November, and November's our last meeting. August, September, then by the time you get somebody, it's October, November, or November's our last meeting. So for that purpose, just to get things on motion, I'm making motion that we RFQ the RFQ?
P.
Yep. RP. Put out, put RFP out. If everybody decides to keep determining, I'm fine with it, but we, if we don't do this, we're gonna be.
See who's out there.
We're gonna be into the next year anyway, so I think that.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second after Karanka.
I think that's a good idea.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, since you're not, this isn't your final day, we don't need to give you any kumbayas or anything like that.
I would.
You'll be eating this bar or something.
You continue to hate on me.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, another council comment, um something that I brought up in the past is uh I feel pretty passionate that we should be more transparent with the public about our packets. This is what we get, public gets this three pages. There's a lot of good information in this, and I'd love for people to be able to see how we make the decisions so that they better trust the decisions that we make. And so I'm gonna make a motion that we have our packets in their entirety unless there's something in there that's deemed confidential. There's a specific statute that says what confidential records are. All of that put on the county website seventy-two hours before the meeting. So there's time for us to still see the packet, get familiar with it, so that if people ask us questions, we know what's in it. Uh but it's there for them to look at for the meeting and they can follow along. So there's my motion.
It's, and I, we we made a couple of attempts at this. The issue was that when the packet goes on there, there wasn't, some of them didn't have good explanation with it. And so there were a ton of phone calls coming in going, you're spending.
There's a great reason for doing it because
Right.
A perfect example was if a hundred people had seen this thing about a twenty-eight thousand dollar thirty-foot countertop, we'd have had all kinds of people here complaining.
Great way for us to outsource our resources.
Exactly, I'd rather have a hundred cents eyes than seven.
I agree, and we'll try it again.
The only thing is, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but as long as we don't put it so it's, because you know, it's we, it's not your fault, we get ours on Friday, a lot of times our packets come in. As long as it doesn't hold them under that, if we, if they happen to come in late that month, then they just, it comes in late. And then we can, we can say that we'll have it available in the back because we couldn't make the date, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold the auditor's office.
Well, we can't, I don't think we're gonna print out that many copies, here's, here's the other.
I mean, that many copies, available for somebody to read, that's all I say.
The other ish, the other issue was the posting, and it could be the way we did it, the posting went out before the packets were delivered. So so people were getting, the information was going to the public before council members were getting it.
Emails were sent already, but.
I got a call, I had a call from constituents before I got the information myself.
You would have gotten it by mail first.
Email.
But by email first, I mean, but yes, before.
All users apparently got, or department heads, let's say, got that at the same time as I would have.
I think.
Not the email, no, the email comes to you all first and then I wait at least twenty-four hours before it goes, usually I don't do that until a Friday.
I was caught in about a four-day email lag with a phone issue, I'm sure, so.
Just tell us what you want, that's all.
That's it, we'll, we'll work it out, we'll work it out.
I don't have, like I said, we tried.
Seventy-two hours, so that'd be like the Friday before.
We almost always have the packets to you, the electronic versions by Tuesday or Wednesday typically. It's.
The packets are usually delivered on Friday, Thursday.
The email.
Right.
We try to get it to the to the jail by Tuesday, depending on everything.
They usually deliver them like that day, they don't.
Yeah, I think this week we got them.
This week it wasn't delivered until Wednesday.
Well, absolutely, we'll try it again, I mean, I don't have an issue, the issue came up was when Mr. Cunningham called me and said, hey, you know, I'm getting this, and then I think the month before, the initial one, we pulled it because there was some stuff in there that wasn't.
I think we only did one that went to the public, but yeah.
Correct, because we pulled, we didn't, we didn't do the other one.
Uh, Mr. President, before we adjourn.
Did you wanna, did you wanna second on that?
Put a motion, so I'm hoping.
Yeah, I did second it, I seconded it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With a little enthusiasm. Motion passes.
Those opposed?
Those opposed? Beautiful, opposed, yeah.
Good job, Adam.
What else did you have?
I wanna make sure I understand what time we are to be here tomorrow morning for our budget hearings. I've seen eight and I've seen seven forty-five and.
Oh, I didn't see any of those times.
No, good day of coffee.
It used to be eight forty when you had the revenue thing, so since I've not heard anything, I did make it nine AM.
Start my day at four, you guys can.
Yeah.
Big time after. What time, so what time, what time does everybody wanna be here? Nine o'clock? And then we're going to.